We're a little bit after seven o'clock, so we're gonna get this meeting in in order here. My name's John Swanson. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission and I'm gonna call the meeting of the Dallas Planning Commission to order here on August eighth at seven P M. It's actually seven oh three P M. And we will have a roll call from city staff, please, to make sure we have a quorum.
Commissioner Newell.
Here.
Commissioner Koash? Not present. Commissioner Spofford. Commissioner Vanford? Not present. Commissioner Bro.
Here, please.
Commissioner Schulte?
Here.
And Commissioner Swanson.
Here. Okay, agenda item number three, approval of the minutes. This is the minutes that are attached to our agenda from the regular meeting of July twenty twenty-three. I have read those minutes, but I was absent from that meeting. So I will, while I approve of the minutes, because I wasn't present, I will abstain from from recommending their approval. But do we have a motion to recommend the approval of the July twenty twenty-three meeting of the Dallas Planning Commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Schulte, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Spofford. So the minutes are approved.
We should vote.
What's that? Oh, we should vote. We should vote. So let's have a, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the July meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the same? Okay, the minutes passed. We're now approaching item number four, which is public comment, and I'm going to reserve for a moment and ask Lane Shutterly, who is our city legal counsel, to read a statement of notice regarding planning commission procedures and some of the events that are on the horizon that may involve the Dallas Planning Commission. So I'm gonna hand it over to our counsel, Lane Shutterly. Thanks, Lane.
All right, thank you. First, let me just ask if anyone is here tonight for public comment, that would be on anything other than the hearings that are scheduled tonight. You're here, you're all here for the hearings? In that case, I think we can just continue on.
Excellent. Well, a little bit of context, there is, there's been discussion about a project or a proposed development that may or may not be applied for here in the city of Dallas. It's received some, a lot of, a lot of attention, and we wanted to make sure that folks understand that that potential project is not been applied for yet. It's not an official project, and it's nothing that we're gonna be discussing tonight. But if anyone was here that wanted to make a statement on that subject, you would be permitted. So since everyone's here to discuss what's on the agenda for this evening, I believe that we can proceed. So I can ask the rhetorical question now, are there any public comments, citizens may speak on any subject that is not on the agenda for this evening? Are there any public comments not on the agenda this evening?
John, excuse me, you said that someone could speak during the public comment about that project?
They, they could make comments on that, but it would not have any bearing. We wouldn't be answering any questions.
But this particular statement here says that they shouldn't speak before us until we actually have that.
On that particular.
Because that would be.
Yeah. That ex parte.
Ex parte, and we can't have that.
That's right.
But we're not there, so.
Okay.
We can move on. Yeah, 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 yeah.
We're not there. We're not there. But there is always an opportunity for folks to go on the record at a public meeting.
Right, but they can't talk about, we made the request, they not talk about that.
Or we could say, thank you for your comments. We'll see you when that arrives.
And we're all disqualified and you've got a problem. Go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry, Newell.
That's fine, that's fine. So if there's no public comment on items that are not on our agenda this evening, we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is a public hearings. What's that?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I did have a public comment.
So please step forward to, to present a public comment. We gotta do things all official here and make sure that we know who you are and what you're saying, and also so that we have your contact information to get back to you. So please have a seat, state your name and your address, and you've got three minutes to address the Dallas Planning Commission this evening.
Okay, name is Dean Boucher, live at three two one five Mistletoe. I'm not a speaker, so. A little nervous here, but.
Don't be.
I did wanna make a comment, it's actually like a little analogy type thing, but basically, if we see a cougar in a neighborhood, we rush grabbing guns, whatever, to try to get rid of it or kill it before getting out of there. You know, we protect our pets, our family, whatever. I wonder how people are gonna react. One, there's a pedophile drug user roaming around their neighborhood. Are they gonna be just as concerned about their family and kids? I think so. The homeless in our community is increasing. And we need to remember, it only takes one individual to commit a crime. Maybe rape or murder someone, whatever. It only takes one individual to ruin things. I think we just need to be a little careful.
So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment on an item that's not on our agenda for this evening? Is there anyone on the phone?
We have no one on the phone.
Thank you. Okay, then, we will now move on to agenda item number five, which is a public hearing on conditional use permit number C U P two three dash oh five for the Hundred Acre Academy at nine fifty Southwest Church Street. And I'm gonna call that public hearing to order right now at seven oh nine P M. I have a little script to read, and again, this is all public process to make sure that we're all above board and doing things according to appropriate procedure. This is a public hearing regarding property at nine fifty Southwest Church Street. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Public Commission. I now declare the public hearing open, which I previously did. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I read the following statement. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the planning commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based upon that issue. Please direct all testimony to the record and applicable criteria that are listed in the staff report or to criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in code chapters. Chase?
Four point four zero four zero.
Thank you.
And.
Four point two zero six zero.
Excellent. At this time, I will ask if any members of our planning commission have a conflict of interest, a site visit, or ex parte contact to declare on this conditional use permit for nine fifty Southwest Church. Commissioners? Seeing none, this hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report, followed by questions of staff, and that would be questions from the planning commissioners to staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant, including any members of the applicant team, for a total of fifteen minutes. And this may be followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. Thereafter, we'll hear from all other interested parties in presenting testimony on the items before the commission this evening. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. And again, if you have a few more things to say, we're very flexible on that. It's just to apply a little bit of a law and order to, to the proceedings. So then we will, after five minutes of testimony, for anyone that has anything to, anything to speak on, on the proposed conditional use, we will then provide the applicant with five minutes to rebut any testimony that was received. After we've heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the commission to deliberate, and then ask if there's a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Chase Blue, city planner. So staff report. So the proposed development is at nine fifty Southwest Church Street, which is on the downtown area, as you can see on the map there. Here we have an aerial view of the site, highlighted there in red. It's currently an undeveloped vacant lot behind the Carnegie Building. The, the tree that's shown in that aerial image has been removed due to disease, so that's a little bit of an outdated photograph, but that's where the site would be. The operation would be in conjunction with the adjacent school that was approved by the planning commission last year in the Carnegie Building and is for a playground. So we have a site plan, not necessarily to scale of the proposed improvements of that playground, showing perimeter fencing, playground area, and a portable shed kind of storage building. The approval criteria for conditional use permits, the staff report goes into greater detail as to how the approval criteria are met, but generally the criteria require that the site size, dimensions, locations, topography, and access be adequate for the needs of the proposed use, considering proposed building mass, parking, traffic noise, vibration, exhaust, and emissions, light, glare, erosion, odor, dust, visibility, safety, and other aesthetic concerns, considerations. In this case, since the development consists of a playground, they're not building new structures, not necessarily adding uses beyond the open space kind of use. The overall needs of the use are fairly minimal, and the impacts thus are fairly minimal as well. The negative, second criteria is that the negative impacts of the proposed use can be on adjacent properties can be mitigated through application of code standards or the reasonable conditions of approval. So staff weren't really able to identify any negative impacts. This playground does necessarily increase the capacity of the school itself, so the same number of students would be in the school whether it's a playground or not, so not really having impact on traffic and, and those sorts of things. And the site is located in the sort of central business district, so a higher intensity of use is reasonable to expect in that area. And the third criteria is that all public facilities have adequate capacity to serve the proposal. Again, the development is generally open space, so water, sewer, streets, capacity, not really a huge issue in this particular instance. So that's kind of the extent of the staff report. Approval criteria for site design review also have to be met. And the staff report goes into some greater detail as to how those are met, but again, they're not really building anything, and most of site designer view approval criteria are tied to building and developing, developing of actual structures and those sorts of things. So most of those approval criteria either don't apply or can easily be met. So staff report goes into some greater detail on that. But in general, staff's recommendation is for approval of the, the request with conditions as stated in the staff report.
What are the conditions, Chase?
Oh, yes. The conditions, those are to receive inspection and final approval from the Dallas Building Department prior to occupancy of any buildings. And then any gates and the perimeter fence have to be operable by the fire department. And if the shed storage structure is larger than a hundred and twenty square feet, then the gate has to be at least twenty feet in width for fire access. So those are the conditions of approval, pretty minimal in the grand scope of things.
Thank you. Are there the commissioners that have questions of staff on the report? Anyone? Andy?
Two questions. First off, I'm just curious, the second condition, the the shed, if it's larger than a hundred and twenty square feet, that's different than the no building permit required for a residential type structure. Is that part of fire code is why that number is there?
The state building code differentiates between residential and non-residential structures. So residential structures larger than two hundred square feet require permits. In commercial settings, that standard is less, it's a hundred and sixty. The state building code kind of assumes you might have more hazardous materials in a, in a commercial setting, thus the lower threshold, but.
Did you say a hundred and sixty?
Hundred and six.
Staff report says a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, yes. I'm sorry, I misspoke.
That's okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping me honest on that numbers.
Always count on me, Chase. Second question, could you go back to the site, the overall site picture? Can you point out where the building that the school is in, just from my memory? I don't know. I think it's the one directly to the north.
Yes, it's the one directly to the north.
I remember when we talked about it, there were some kitty corner things and.
Yes, the one that's located actually on the corner there.
The corner is where the school is.
That's correct. And there's a, there's a rear door that opens up onto this open space as well, so very convenient for them.
Cool. Thank you.
A question from me, Chase, is this a separate lot or is it a, is it the same lot as the former Carnegie Building, now the school?
So this is a separate piece of property, and so that's essentially what kind of brings us here today with a new conditional use permit, because this piece of property was not part of the original conditional use permit for the school. So since it is a separate property, separate permit, so.
Okay, well, because the playground is a, an accessory use to the school, is there any necessity for this lot to be combined with the lot with the school in order for us to entertain the conditional use proposal?
I would not imagine so, essentially because, especially because they're not necessarily building anything. If they were trying to, you know, build an expansion to their existing school building, they, they wouldn't be able to build across property lines. They would have to consolidate the property.
Sure.
But in this case, since there's no actual construction of that nature, the property line is largely irrelevant.
So I can also then assume that, say, there's a property where the playground is being proposed, if that were to be sold to another party, because it is a separate lot and that could occur, that our conditional use, if we approve it, would be null and void at the point where it's no longer affiliated with the school. Is that correct?
Um, well, so the conditional use would be for a playground. So if the new owner of the property wanted to use it as a playground, then the conditional use would persist. Right.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, that's fine.
It's, the, the conditional use permit expires when the use changes, not the ownership.
Excellent, thank you.
That's why when churches change hands, they don't have to go through the whole public process again, even if the church is under different ownership.
See, I prompted you to the answer that we were trying to get, to get to. So that, thank you very much. So does the shed require a building permit or not?
It depends on the size, so it'll depend on how big they propose to build it.
What did they propose in the application? I don't see it. I don't have it.
I don't believe the application specified, and you could probably ask the applicant that question.
That's fine, that's fine. Maybe they can address that when they speak. Any services to the shed proposed, electric, plumbing?
Not as was identified in the, the application. Doesn't mean that that wouldn't be allowed if they wanted to have like a sink or a light out there. Those would be subject to the appropriate building permits, of course.
Totally get it. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from planning commissioners for staff on the?
You brought up, just as a question, are both properties under the same ownership?
Good question.
No, I do not believe so.
Okay. Okay. And what is the, what's the legal agreement between the property owners? Because again, this is obviously an accessory use to the school.
Right, and that's probably a question best asked of the applicant, but my understanding is that the applicant owns the playground property, but is leasing the school building. But the applicant could probably answer that question in, in greater detail than I could.
Okay, and I'm not obviously an expert on, on real estate law and how all that works. I just wanna make sure that down the road, in the future, when things are occurring that we don't know about today, that somehow the school becomes separated from its playground. So it's just something to keep in mind.
I think it's important to note that the approval of the school was not contingent on the playground. So if that were to happen, if the playground were to go away, the school could continue to operate under the previous approval, so.
Right, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners for staff? Thank you very much, Chase. Okay, we'll now hear from the applicant. Applicant, please step forward, bring your whole team, bring up some extra chairs if you.
She's gonna stand away over here and pass out some papers for me.
We always enjoy that.
You're not gonna change outfits between things.
I don't know what she's gonna do.
Not a requirement. Okay, that's cool. Thank you.
Okay.
So as a reminder, you have fifteen minutes to present, and please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Yep, Mandy Breitenstein, and my address is sixteen thirty-five George Court Northwest in Salem. Good evening. As I said, my name is Mandy Breitenstein, and I am the owner of the Hundred Acre Academy here in Dallas. We are a private school serving students in kindergarten through eighth grade, and we do operate out of the Carnegie Building on Court Street. We recently purchased the lot behind our building at nine fifty Southwest Church Street with the hope of creating a playground for our students. What you have in front of you is a rough plan for what that playground will look like. If approved, this will be a multi-year campaign for us as we fundraise within our community to make this vision a reality for our students. So while these structures will be similar to the future installed playground, they may not be exact. I will go ahead and highlight a few things on the proposal. The entire lot will be fenced in the coming weeks, including a twelve-foot-long vehicle gate on the church street side of the lot and a four-foot man gate on the Carnegie side. And you see that notated here with the red lines. We will have a four-foot black chain link fence along church and four feet back from the street and six-foot fencing around the remaining perimeter. We will be working with Little Tikes Commercial to have commercial playground equipment professionally installed with accessible playground flooring. We will work with the city to assess any permits or grading that may need to take place prior to the installation by Little Tikes. In regards to the shed, I can answer those questions for you. It is a small storage shed. It's only six by six. It's not gonna have any power or anything. I mean, a sink sounded great, but we were not thinking that. This is just to store playground equipment, and we will also install some picnic tables, new sod, and landscaping to improve the overall curb appeal of that area of the block. There will be no impact on existing traffic. This playground will be for the exclusive use of our students during the school day, and like Chase said, the number of our students doesn't change with or without the playground. And that's all I have for you, short and sweet, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Thank you very much. Does, do any of the planning commissioners have any questions this evening for the applicant? Mr. Schulte?
Are these fences converted, like blocks?
Yes, they do have blocks.
Any other questions? Andy? I make Andy go last.
Makes me go last, and then he goes last after me. So I think I heard you say you're putting fall protection underneath the playground equipment, and now it'll be done by Little Tikes as well.
Yes, so they do professional installation, and we're going to be doing the accessible flooring, so it's those, like the rubber mats.
Yes.
Yes, we'll be using that.
I built park play structures.
Oh, great.
Exactly what you're talking about.
You know, maybe you'd like to come help us when we're ready to install.
Talk about that.
I put it this way, I've been the engineer involved in, in building the park, so I haven't done it myself, but I can test it.
Yeah.
Anyway, so on your little site plan, the playground is internal, and then you talked about sod, are you putting grass around?
Yeah.
Inside the fence?
Yeah, so the lot is really large, and it's larger than we need for just the play structure. So we will have some sod, some landscaping. Right now, I don't know if you've seen the lot, it's just a lot of weeds, dead grass. We did have to.
Some pave current.
It's nothing, no. It's just an empty lot, yep. So yes, we'll be adding some picnic tables for the kids if they want to have lunch outside, and then a playground area, small storage shed, and some sod and some landscaping.
Sounds beautiful.
Yeah, we're excited.
You're not putting in a sandbox for the cats to go to bed.
No.
Then I'm good.
Nope.
Any detail you can provide us for the landscaping? I know the fence is there for privacy and anything for shade or anything that, that you're proposing there?
So we don't have the full details on a landscaping plan. When we get to that point, we'll have someone come out and give us some suggestions. We will be, we had to cut down that beautiful tree. Sadly, it was rotting, so we do want to replace it, to replant a tree where it was. And I don't know if, well, you can see the tree on this, so where that tree was, we would like to replant in that same general area.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant from planning commissioners this evening? Seeing none, we will now hear, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will now hear from those in attendance tonight who would like to address the commission on this item. Either, your opinion is valued, and we will take your public comments now. If you'd like to testify on this application for a conditional use, please raise your hand. We'll bring you up one at a time. Okay, seeing none. There's no opportunity for the applicant to rebut any testimony as none was provided. We've got a quiet crowd this evening. Are there any final comments from staff or from the city attorney on this proposal this evening? Chase?
Is it appropriate, then, staff, the question? Chase, are there permitting requirements? Are there land, are there landscaping requirements at all on this particular proposal?
Given that the site is currently vegetated, the actual landscaping standards don't really come into play all that much.
If they develop it and when they get to the point where they actually have a site plan with all those, do they have to get a permit for that, or can they just put grass in and away they go?
Yeah, they can, they can just put grass in and away they go.
As long as they don't require a building permit or anything like that.
Right, I mean, a lot of our, our landscaping standards are kind of tied to the specific kind of use. So since they're not building like a parking lot, for example, the parking lot perimeter landscaping standards don't come into play, those sorts of things. So they can kind of leave it as is if they want to, like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
I think we could probably also make the assumption, since they're making a, a play area, that it's gonna be the landscaped appropriately to be comfortable for those that are using it. So, yeah, it seems like. Okay, so if there's no further comment, and I'll give anybody, if there's anybody else that'd like to have a chance to, to speak on this topic, I'd give you that chance right now, but if not, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed at seven twenty-nine P M. So is there any discussion or a motion by any of the planning commissioners referring to conditional use permit twenty-three oh five for a playground on this site adjacent to the school that occupies the Carnegie Building?
I move to approve the conditional use permit with the conditions stated by staff.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to approve the conditional use for twenty-three dash oh five. Is there any discussion amongst planning commissioners before we take a vote? I think we're all on the same page on this, so I think that rather than go through roll call, we can just do a a, a vote by hand. All planning commissioners in support of approval of this conditional use, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the same? Okay, passes unanimously. So.
Congratulations. And good luck.
The motion, wait, we're not finished yet. I have more, more to read here. So the motion, the motion passes and carries unanimously. An order reflecting this planning commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within ten business days. So we appreciate you coming in and going through the process with us, and congratulations and good luck on the continued development of your school downtown here in Dallas.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
They did get through the hard part, I'd say. But I'll wait till you say a little spiel. I'll try to, I probably won't remember, but I'll try.
Okay, so we're gonna move on now to our second public hearing, which is a sign code exemption, which is number S G N twenty-three dash oh eight for Village Missions at six ninety-six East Ellendale Avenue. And the specific exception was for a sign height. East Ellendale Avenue and the specific exception was for a sign height. So, uh. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Public Planet, the Dallas Planning Commission. I'm reading all this the same as the one we did before. Uh, I now declare this public hearing open at seven thirty-two P M. Uh, as this application is subject to land use proceeding recognized by state law. I am required to read the statement, the failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail. To afford the planning commission and parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Precludes appeal to the state loose land use board of appeals based upon that issue. So please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria listed in the staff report or to criteria. In the Dallas Development Code, you believe applies to the decisions. Applicable uh, applicable approval criteria are found in code chapters. I refer to staff.
That's correct.
That would be correct, yes.
What was it again?
Six point six point one two zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I don't have that in front of me, so.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Uh, so I'll now ask at this time if there are any planning commissioners that have a conflict of interest. A site visit or an ex parte contact to declare in uh regards to the sign code exemption for. Uh, Village Missions at six nine six East Ellendale Avenue. Any contact? Members of the church talked about and visited the site, I'm seeing none.
We drive by it every day, so.
We all drive by it frequently.
That's not a site.
That's not a site visit, that's a drive-by.
Okay.
Okay, so the conducting will be uh uh conducted in the following, the hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report. Followed by questions from staff. After that, we'll hear from the applicant. Uh, including any members of the applicant team that want to participate for a total of fifteen minutes. And this may be followed by questions from members of the planning commission. So we will then uh provide. An opportunity for all other interested parties in presenting testimony on the item for the commission and each person that wants to testify. Will be afforded uh five minutes to do so. After that, if there is any testimony, the applicant then has five minutes to rebut. Any testimony that was presented after their opportunity to present. So after we've heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the planning commission to deliberate. And then ask for a motion in response to the proposal. In this case, again, as the one before, the commission's decision. Is final unless the decision is appealed to the city council. So at this time, we'll start with the staff report. Uh, Chase, may we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Okay, so again, I'm Chase Blue, the city planner. Uh, that hasn't changed in the last five minutes. Um, so, uh, this particular request, uh, six ninety-six East Ellendale. Um, they're on the north side of town. Um, we can see the vicinity here. It's next to the Grace Church. It's the site of the Village Missions. And uh, we have the uh vicinity view of the uh, the the property here. You can see there is. I guess this was not the best photo to pull off Google or if you can't see anything through the garbage cans. Uh, but you can see that the the property sits quite a bit lower in elevation than the road does. Um. And so that's what leads us to the request for the sign exception. Um, this is a little bit different than you're accustomed to. You guys have done variances before, uh, year after year. Um, you really haven't seen a sign exception from me. Um, and in part, that's because uh sign exceptions used to be uh decided and approved by staff. Um, and so there have been a number of them that have approved over the years. Some of those ended up being a little bit controversial and so there was a code change. That made sign exceptions the jurisdiction of the uh planning commission. And so this is the first uh exception that's come to you guys under that new uh decision-making rule. So, um, the approval criteria hasn't changed, even though the procedure type has. Um, the approval criteria are quite a bit more lax than uh for a standard variance. Um, a standard variance is usually fairly typical to achieve for uh sign exceptions, though. Um, the the request is necessary to prevent a hardship due to factors such as topography, location, surrounding development, lots of shape or lot size. Um, is kind of the first criteria. The second is that the granting of exception does not result in material damage or prejudice to other property in the vicinity. Um, and the third is that the request will not be detrimental to the community's standards and the appearance of the city. Um, so those approval criteria are a a fair bit more generous than the approval criteria for a a variance for. Building other types of development. Uh, which makes some level of sense because signs are usually less impactful than other types of development might be. Um, but those are the approval criteria for sign code exceptions. Um, and so in this case, what's being proposed is a a nine-foot-tall monument sign, as you can see in the rendering here. Um, six foot by code is the height limit for um uh monument signs. Um, but given the sloping of the topography, a a six-foot-high sign would not have uh the same level of visibility. Because the property does sit lower. Um, again, as you can see in the the rendering there, um, the photo rendering at the. Base of the sign is quite a bit lower than the adjacent road. So that's kind of the uh, the the juris- uh justification for the exception. Um, the staff report goes into some greater level of detail uh with findings for those approval criteria, but essentially finding. No negative impacts on the community, doesn't harm uh community standards or is detrimental to the city. So, um, fairly, fairly straightforward approval process on that. Um, and staff are recommending that the application be approved with essentially uh two uh uh conditions of approval. Uh, the first is that if the sign is uh removed uh or demolished uh by any means and not replaced within twelve months. That the uh exception uh approval shall lapse and any future sign shall comply with the sign code then in effect. That's kind of a standard, uh, you know, condition of approval for when uh uses cease to operate. Uh, second condition of approval, um, not listed in the staff report, but uh being suggested um to have the. Applicant pay the the sign uh uh permit application fees. Um, it looks like that might have been overlooked in the intake process, so catching that on the back end, uh, condition of approval recommended to be added. Um, that they pay the application fee, so. Uh, that's kind of what I have for staff report. Certainly happy to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions, commissioners?
Andy? Does it require a building permit being nine feet high?
Uh, the building official did not indicate that that would be the case. Uh, s- signs, there there's been a change in the state building code. Which is what our our local building official enforces, um, essentially removing signs and other like non-building kind of structures. From the purview of the building department. Um, local jurisdictions can enact local ordinances to add. New additional things to their purview, um, but freestanding signs generally not under the purview of the building official under this new interpretation. So, um, yeah.
I would imagine if it was like twenty feet tall and, you know, large, it would require engineering and then require a building permit, but.
Well.
I could see why the building, cause. Yeah, I can see why the building official didn't think this one was.
Right.
But that's surprising that they don't require at least something if it's structural.
You you can build a hundred and twenty-foot-tall uh cell tower and there's no building permit required for that. It's not a building. You can build a twenty-foot-tall retaining wall. It's not a building. So I think there's some interesting uh consequences from from that interpretation at the state.
As a written civil engineer where life and safety is paramount. That scares me, but that's for another time, thank you.
So if the wind blows it down.
And it falls on somebody, it better not fall on me. You know, okay.
Any other questions, Andy?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Is the, is the sign lit in any way? Is it powered in any way? Is there, are there external lights on it, internal lights?
Um, the applicant could probably answer that in greater detail. My understanding from the proposal, what is that? It was not. Um, indirect lighting obviously would be allowed. Um, i- in theory, internal illumination could also be permissible, but. Um, the. Yeah, but the application says non-illuminated, so.
Right.
I would assume that means non-illuminated.
Excellent. That that question was sort of in conjunction to Andy's question about uh requirement for permitting.
Right, if it was illuminated, that would trigger the requirement for an electrical permit.
Sure.
Um, the trick though is that electrical permits are through Polk County, not through the city, so a little bit outside of our jurisdiction.
Sure. Uh. Is this property inside of what is we refer to as the lock rail node?
It is, yes.
Is there anything in the lock rail node, uh, uh? Oh, for lack of a better word, regulations that uh I, that are specific to signs in lock rail node and.
No.
There are not, so there's.
Not to my knowledge.
So, so just general citywide sign code requirements are applicable to this application. And I'm gonna ask one more question and it's just for the edification of us. What's the difference between an exception and a variance in regards to a sign like this? Would the sign have to be bigger, closer to the road? What would make it a variance and not an exception? Since this is a new thing for us that was previously uh considered for administrative approval.
Right, yes, so the the sign code has its own exception approval criteria. And so that ends up being kind of the key difference administratively, um, is that the approval criteria are different. Um, there are limitations uh to what can be uh granted exceptions under the sign code. Um, signs that are prohibited, um, are not allowed to have exceptions granted. Um, it conceivably, that could be approved for the variance process with the variance approval criteria in chapter five point. Uh, one, but um, not through the sign exceptions process. Um, that's really kind of the only key difference I could think of. Um, really the difference is what are the approval criteria for the decision?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Are there any other planning commissioner questions for staff on this uh sign? Uh, sign code exception proposal? No? Okay, then we will now hear, thank you, Chase. Appreciate it very much, as always. We'll now hear from the applicant. As a reminder, uh, you have fifteen minutes to present and I remind you also to please state your name and your address. For the record of these proceedings. Thank you, sir.
Oh, good evening, commissioners. I'm David Tegmeyer. I'm with Village Mission six nine six East Ellendale. And Chase, you covered the details pretty well. I don't know what else to add other than maybe a few. Dimensions. If you look at the photo on the right. The first post closest to the road is about sixteen feet from the curb. And as Chase said. Uh, the reason we're asking for the exception is the drop in the elevation. There's about. Uh, from road grade down to where the first post is, is about uh two-foot drop in grade. It's about two and a half from the sidewalk. Um, so for visibility above the hedge and um. Also just not to block uh vision of traffic. Um, we're we're requesting that our sign be allowed to be taller.
Excellent. Is there anything else?
Um. We don't have electricity out there, uh, so it's, I think that's why uh it was applied for as non-illuminated. We had discussed, maybe if we had the opportunity to put like a solar. Um, light or something on it, we may want the, we'd ask maybe the opportunity to do that. I don't know that we would do it, but. Um, that would probably be our only option at this point.
Excellent. Well, as Chase said, if you wanted to do that, you would apply for an electrical permit through Polk County and not us. We're just. Interested in the development of the sign uh according to our code, so.
Would they need that for solar?
Not for a solar light.
Not for solar, they don't need that.
Probably not, no.
That's why we have an engineer.
Who's currently building something, so he goes to that permit, yeah.
Okay, well, I I I appreciate you, uh, your your uh, your presentation. Are there any planning commissioners that have any questions for the applicant this evening?
Surely Andy does.
I'm fresh out after asking my building permit question, Chase, and got more than I wanted. So, I can't think of it. It looks great to me and I can understand why you'd want it.
Excellent.
Did have a question.
I knew it.
Since the illumination made me think, are you guys open during, just during the day?
The office.
Familiar with your business, so.
The office is only open during the day, but there is a um. Meeting room above the, above the office that sometimes is used in the evening.
So you might want to have a solar light on so people could see where you are, they don't know where.
That's what we're thinking.
Okay, makes sense. I think, I don't know where the streetlights are out there, but. I can't remember going by it at night, but I couldn't see it or not, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure you'll figure it out and it doesn't.
Car lights might be enough, so.
Yeah, are there any other questions from commissioners for the applicant? If not, we will now hear, thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, we'll now hear from anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address. The planning commission on this item. Please raise your hand if you'd like to testify. Is it, and no one's on the phone, right, Ben?
No.
Okay, so seeing none, uh, we will, uh. Now move on to any final comments from staff or the city attorney on this proposal for an exception to the sign code.
Just as a historical note, I think it's probably been more than twenty years, but I remember uh Grace Church did the same application. It's the next property to have a an exception uh for a higher sign because the same thing that along that whole uh stretch of Ellendale property. Fall off the roadway, so we have precedent uh right there in that neighborhood.
Excellent.
Very kind of exception.
Okay, makes us even more comfortable with the, yeah, application. So, okay. So barring any more comments or testimony from from staff, attorney, uh, those in attendance or the applicant. I declare the public ho- uh, hearing closed at seven forty-eight P M. So I will ask now, uh, do we have any deliber- deliberation on this topic uh with the planning commission? Seeing none, uh. Is there any uh, anyone that would like to make a motion on uh what's being proposed for the planning commission this evening?
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Village Missions exception with the recommended conditioning.
Excellent, thank you. Is there a second? And there is a second. So is there any further discussion on the exception for the sign permit at this location?
Just for clarification, that's with the second condition.
Yes.
That she, that she stated.
She said that.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, correct. Okay, so again, I think that we're all pretty well uh in line with what's been presented to us this evening. So we will vote uh not by roll call, but by uh uh voice. So uh, the motion is to approve. Uh, the sign code exception S G N twenty-three dash oh eight with the recommended conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. So the announcement of decision is this, the motion passes and carries unanimously. A reflection, an order reflecting the commission's decision tonight. Will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within ten business days. And we thank you folks for uh uh. Going through the process with us and we appreciate uh the applicant and. The excellent staff work that was done here this evening, so thank you very much.
This is the biggest audience we've got that didn't say anything. We, we appreciate having an audience, this is great. Thank you for your interest.
Come anytime, once a month.
Once a month.
Whether you like it or not.
Second Tuesday, seven o'clock, right here.
All right, so those are our two public hearings for this evening. We thank everybody for your participation and kind indulgence. And all these processes that we gotta go through to make everything official. So we're gonna move on to uh meeting agenda item number seven. Which is planning commissioners' comments. Uh, this is an opportunity for planning commissioners to make any comments on the record for items that have. Or have not been discussed this evening. Are there any comments that would like to be submitted this evening for, from the planning commissioners?
Not even me.
Seeing none, I will uh just make one brief comment in that we have discussed. A few times at previous planning commission meetings that we are requesting from city staff to provide the planning commission with some. Tutorial guidance and uh uh training on planning commission procedures and. on planning commission procedures and processes. I think it's something that's important that we refresh ourselves upon if we've been involved in this process and this commission for a while, and we've got some new members as well. And I've been assured by city staff that we intend to have a, a training or a workshop set up sometime within the next two months. We will set up a separate meeting. It will be a workshop. It won't be an official public meeting, but it'll give us an opportunity to refresh ourselves and learn more about our authority and our responsibility as planning commissioners. It's something we've been talking about since January and as I said just today, I got some assurances from the city manager that we're going to be able to set that up in the next couple of months. If not in if not this month in August and September, but in the next couple of months, we'll all get emails and we will be appraised of potential times and dates and we'll find something that works best for most everybody and we'll get that done.
With pizza?
What's that?
With pizza?
That is negotiable. Let's wait till we have the, the, the email discussion.
I mean, it's.
Pizza, then we start talking about toppings and salads and, you know.
Spare beer.
Didn't go there. I, I, for the record, I didn't go, didn't go there, but, but I, I just wanted to let everybody know that that is something that we've been, we've been pressing for. It's in progress and we're going to have some resolution on that issue in the, in the near term. Yeah, excellent. Thank, yeah, and thank you. And Commissioner Schulte is a fairly new commissioner, has been one of the folks that's been sort of leading, leading the charge on making sure that we're all up to date on what our roles and responsibilities are. So thank you for that, John. So agenda, item number eight is staff comments. Does staff have any comments for the, for the planning commission? Good of the order on this evening.
So one of the things that you guys have been asking for is to be kept appraised of applications that you guys have approved or I suppose denied in the past. And so we've been doing some, some building permit review on the new Dutch Brothers that was approved. We did a rezoning on that last year, you may recall. And then a conditional use permit approval on that early this year. And so we have been doing the building permit review and the sign permit review and all those kind of fun, fun reviews. So in theory, you should start seeing some construction out there in the near future. Fingers crossed, we'll find out. But that is.
Die.
No, it has not.
Said, we're going to build it and we're going to have it up and running in six months and I'm going.
I thought it was thirty, sixty days.
Yeah, it wasn't going to be very long.
Yep, so I can't say what the holdup was. I, I don't know the answer to that, but we have seen paperwork on it. So it, it is still alive as near as I can tell, so.
Best laid plans.
Indeed.
And we did our job, so.
We did our job.
Yes.
Got approved.
And anything else? That's excellent, Chase. Thank you for doing that. Yeah, we like to hear. You know, we, we, we sit through these. We make these decisions. Oh, a new sign's going to get built someday at Village Missions. And then we see it someday and then, so it, it's great. I appreciate that. And if you can keep that up, especially when it's something of public interest, we like to know what's going on. Because as planning commissioners, believe it or not, our friends and families know that we where we go once, once a month on a, on a, on a Tuesday evening and we get asked questions like, whatever happened to that thing that you approved a few months ago? So it is good to hear some sort of, some, some backstory or some, 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 some feedback on the progress of projects. Is there anything else you have for us?
Nothing that's particularly as exciting. The, the variances and the, the partition that was approved for driveways. Those are theoretically moving forward. I've had some conversations with the surveyor, so we'll be seeing some of that soon, hopefully in the next couple of months, but that's kind of what I have for you, yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. So that essentially concludes the business, the Dallas Planning Commission this evening. And without further ado, unless there's any other comments or questions or items of interest for the planning commissioner from the planning commissioners. I'm going to declare this meeting to be adjourned at seven fifty-six.